It is six o'clock. We will call the Sartell City Council Meeting for Monday, July 26th to order. Please rise for Pledge of Allegiance. First item on our agenda tonight is the Agenda Review and Adoption. I would look for a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Put a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? That carries. Next item on our agenda tonight is open forum, public comment. We do have a max of five that are signed up. I will read through the rules real quick. Each speaker does have three minutes to address the council, the podium, for a maximum of five individuals, which we do have tonight. Registration, when you're at the podium, please state your name, address, and topic that you wish to discuss. As council, we cannot debate, discuss, or formally act on any matter presented tonight. We can, at the end of our meeting, opt to put that to staff or other boards or commission as deemed necessary. First up is Joe Lar.
Thank you. I'd just like to share a couple of things. Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers, for taking the time. I've lived within 1.8 miles of this very spot for 62 years as of Wednesday. I've never lived anywhere else. Three locations in Sartell and seven locations in Leesack Township. Sartell is home. It's a great place to live. It's always been a place where people are friendly and very supportive of our community. I am proud of the fact that, just like many other businessmen and women in our community, I have invested hundreds of thousands of dollars in our schools, community parks, ball fields, and churches. I have learned that if you give, it shall be given unto you. Pressed down, shaken together, and running over shall men give unto you. Likewise, if you are taker in life, it seems all too often that what you have shall also be taken from you. As you now know, the city's decision to approve the final and preliminary legal land locked Lloyd in taking a quarter mile northbound Township Road and eastbound Township Road away, and leaving a planted lot directly at the end of his driveway with no legal access to the public road. Thankfully, later, the Fennelsons gave up land for a road right away so Lloyd's access can be restored very easily since you have approved the land disturbance permit and should you agree to pay or share the costs of removing the obstacles such as the hydrant pulling guide wires. I've taken advice from councilmember Jeff. In our recent meeting, Jeff brought up the prospect of sharing the expenses a few different directions. So instead of insisting the city pay for all the right-of-way improvement needed in the road right-of-way for the access that was taken from the Charles, I offered a proposal to the city last Tuesday where Lloyd and I will contribute most of over 11,000 costs in clearing in earthwork. Lloyd has also agreed to give up asphalt on the right-of-way that he always had with the Township Road and most recent cul-de-sac adjacent Stock's property. There will always be voices telling you why you should not give back what was taken from the Charles. None of those voices have come from the city or township residents in the neighborhood. The sentiment is, how could this have been missed by so many and why wouldn't the city be responsible for the return of the access? As you all know, I have been contracting with the city a long time and have seen the city intervene and pay me to fix these problems many times in the past. Don't be deceived into thinking the city cannot because they can and do. What could be a more important function of this council than to restore and return a legal access the city has taken through the final plat approval, especially with the importance blocking access for fire trucks, emergency vehicles, and from getting to a private residence? Why would you expose the city to such a huge liability? He also needs large trucks and farm equipment to access his property as they have for more than 30 years. I'd like to encourage the mayor and council to consider our offer. Respecting property rights of landlords and neighbors has always been a hallmark of the city of Sartell since time began. The recent decision of C to move forward for forced annexation is embarrassment to our city and should never be used as a tool to negotiate to take from others against their will. If we want our city to continue to be attractive to others, join me in considering be a giver and not a taker. Taking ties you up and closes your boundaries, giving is contagious, expands your boundaries and sets you free.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Jill Campa. Is Jill here? Jill Campa? All right, Diane Bregelman. Yeah, if we could take that, um, thank you. And again, I apologize. There is a three-minute time constraint. Apologize for having to cut off, but we do have to keep to three minutes.
I know we're going to look at the plat later on in the meeting, but just some thoughts, let's say. We're kind of up in the air, the residents who live in our area, wondering basic things like when do we know when work is going to start on the area? Are they going to take one lot at a time? Are they going to come in and just clear everything out? Can we know who is going to be? Is it going to be an RBS? In other words, specifics? And we also have concern in our particular interest, my husband Jim and I, the boundary between us and the car wash, which is supposedly going to be put up next to us. We have concerns about hours, how long are they going to be open every day, lights, noise. I think we may want to have you entertain the idea of some extraordinary measures, you know, between us, the boundary between us. We're wondering, can we have multiple things? Can we have a berm along with a fence and then bushes, trees on our side closed? We've learned that that ameliorates a lot of noise. We already know that on our lot as the noise we hear from County Road 1. So we're interested in step-by-step specifics about what's going to happen and when. That would be very useful to us. And that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Jim Bregelman.
Yeah, Diane took some of my thunder away from me. I wasn't aware of that. I guess I'm concerned about some of the things, or all of the things she was concerned about. Noise, lights, who decides the type of buffer that goes in there? Is it the homeowner or is it the commercial property owners? You know, there's a lot of the lights in the neighborhood, but they tend to have lights that shine straight down, like across the street from us and County Road 1. You know, they don't shine out in people's bedrooms and living rooms and things. So I hope that's all considered. We'd like to get from somebody in the, as part of the council, to look up the ordinances regarding the noise and the lighting and also this type of buffers, if that is in an ordinance in Sartell. If we could get that sent to us in the email or somehow in writing, so we know what it is and how it's followed. We'd also like to know the start date for this project. We'd like to know when the date is for punching that road through to County Road 1. Will trucks and heavy equipment go out past our home? Or will they be going out through that new quote roadway? Because that's going to create a lot of noise, a lot of dust unnecessarily. I hope that those things are considered. After all, we live there. What else is it? Will we ever know who the developers are? Or is it a secret that goes into eternity? When will that be made public? The other question I have is, when the project is completed, will there be any part of River Oaks Lane remaining other than what's in front of our residence? In other words, from our residence to the dead end there, is that River Oaks Lane going to be taken over by a patch of parking lot concrete or asphalt? Just how far is that going to go? I have a tree that's right on my lot line. It's about 10 feet from the corner of our house. It's a charter oak. It's been there for probably 150 years. And I'm contesting the idea that it will be cut down because there is a tag on it. It's number 3615. And if I wake up-
And I'll have to stop you there. I think a lot of good questions and I expect a lot of those to be covered during the time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Next up, I have Zaria.
Hi, my name is Zarian Jem. I live at 1609 Blackberry Circle, Sartell, Minnesota. I am a resident of Sartell for the past 15 years. I'm a psychiatrist by profession, have been serving this community for the past 15 years. My kids go to the Sartell School District. I am here to speak regarding the equity concerns that are happening in our community and asking you personally here to join us in this effort. As you know, any place that, when you look at a housing issue, it's an issue of safety, housing, and educational opportunities. That's the three things you look for when you move here. That's what we did 15 years ago and chose this community. Unfortunately, the Sartell school systems are in a crisis right now. They have significant equity issues and we actually lost one of our students to suicide two weeks ago, which was also a very sad and tragic event related to equity and issues with bullying in school. So the fact that the city council and the mayor have not been involved in this process is something I hear again and again and again in every district equity meeting. Where is the mayor? Where are the city council members? Why are they not cooperating with the Sartell school system? The mayor had attended the listening session June last year where teachers, parents, students talked very emotionally about things that they were going through and had spoken and said that the city council and him will be personally involved with the process. But a year has gone by and we have not heard from any council member or mayor in support of what the school is trying to do. There is a parent group that has formed that is speaking very outrageously about the audit, saying that this is an effort by people of color or people who are marginalized to state that Caucasians are racist, which is obviously not true. You don't condemn the person, you condemn their behavior. So if somebody is using the N-word, you tell them, you educate them that that is not the right thing to do. You don't call them a racist. That's all we are asking for equal opportunities for our kids. My kids have been called a terrorist, a devil worshiper. Friends that I know have had their kids threatened to be lynched. This is happening in Sartell, Minnesota. And I implore you that silence is complicitness and we need to hear from you. We need to hear what you think about it, what side you support, and what are you willing to do to help the school district and us change the situations in our school. Otherwise, things are going to come to a head and we are unfortunately going to see more instances of what we are seeing. The mental health crisis the audit found in the school is significantly showing anxiety, depression, and PTSD in our kids. So this is an open invitation for you to join us in this effort and work. And if you do not, we will take this as you are not interested in this process. So please join us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our agenda tonight is the approval of city council minutes from July 27th, or excuse me, July 12th, regular meeting. I'll take a motion and a second to approve those minutes.
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? That carries. Consent agenda. We have items A through H. Anyone wants to pull one for additional discussion? Otherwise, I would take a motion to move that along.
I'll make a motion to approve.
There's a motion. Is there a second to approve consent agenda items A through H?
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? That carries. Onto our public hearings. Tonight, we have three public hearings. First up is River Crossing.
Rob, can you pull up just the plat, please, without the site plan? It'll be the first item documented and then emailed. That was the one, sorry. Okay. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Tonight in your packets, you have included the plans for preliminary plat of River Crossings, which is located on the corner of County Road 1 and Highway 15. This is a commercial plat. The site plan has not been reviewed at this time. This is just the preliminary plat only at this time. Developer is seeking only plat approval for tonight's meeting. The city did review the plat amongst staff as well as city engineering. We did receive verbal confirmation from both the state as their property abuts with Highway 15 and then County Road 1 to the south of the property. We did receive verbal approval as well. Staff does anticipate an amendment on this plat as there is other properties that could potentially become a part of this development to the north, which was originally discussed at the rezone meeting and through other conversations during council meetings. If amended, I would plan to bring that amended plat to the final plat with another public hearing. Some history on these parcels, as we heard both Diane and Jim speak earlier as well. Some of these parcels had recently been annexed in, primarily the Pryor property, which was to the southern, east, southern and eastern border of the properties proposed tonight. The properties have been rezoned from single-family R1 residential to B2 commercial district properties. The plat itself includes six commercial plats with one outlot. Five of these parcels that I'm aware of have developer agreements on them. It will have internal shared driveway and has proposed to be a private drive within the internal of the plat. So it won't be city streets running within the development. It will include shared utility services. The site plat will need to include a comprehensive plan for landscape proposals, for buffers and things like that, as Jim and Diane mentioned earlier. So staff has already been working with developer on that. This property and all setbacks will need to be met as there are multiple buffers between R1 and commercial business districts. So we'll need to exceed those buffers, meet or exceed those buffers with setbacks. There also has been discussion of a potential pylon to the southern, eastern portion of this development as well, assigned pylon. A couple other comments that I just wanted to make per some conversation during the public hearing. We do have an ordinance in place for both lighting and noise. So we will send that over to both of Diane and Jim Bregelman. We can have staff send that over with our ordinance and they can review that. We also have been working with developer and developer is in, in the meeting tonight. He can speak to some of their concerns as well. We've been working on different buffer scenarios and making sure that there is adequate space. Developer is intended to put additional buffers in place to help prevent any noise and lighting reduction for residential areas such as the Bregelman's. Per the resolution within your packets tonight, staff is requesting for council, if approved, the plat to be contingent on site plan review and that it must meet all comments of city staff and engineering as well as state and county comments. Any other questions for staff?
Council, any questions for staff before I open the public hearing? Thank you. We will open the public hearing. If you wish to testify on River Crossing preliminary plat, please step forward to the podium. State your name and address for the record. Anyone wishing to testify? Please.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Paul Tuzy. I am one of the developers of the property. Try to run through a couple of things from meetings that we've had and questions. As Scott said, we do have, we actually have five owners under contract. The majority of the sites are on the south side of River Oaks. We do have the Ferber property under contract on the north side. The reason that the Ferber property is not in the plat yet is that the city didn't want to have them annexed in under Mr. Ferber's ownership. We had a few things to iron out. We're still working through those. One of them being cleaning up his property. I was out there earlier today. I'd say he's 85% there. Walked down by the river and looked down there too. So he's getting there and that'll allow us to close and then we'll get that annexed in and as Scott said, added to the plat. Kind of go through that. Scott hit on, we will have an internal drive lane. Do you want to put up the plan so in kind of-
Rob, can you put up that one with the site plans? Is that the one you're referring to?
We'll have a driveline that'll run on the south side, I'm sorry, on the north side of those outlots along County Road 1. And it'll create a U shape that gets back to where River Oaks Lane is. That'll be a private drive. There'll be shared utilities. We are working on our plans. As Scott said, I actually just saw the plan set came through about half an hour ago. So I'll get those to city staff for review. We will have a comprehensive landscape plan. The city ordinances are pretty clear on what needs to happen, amount of materials that need to go in and that'll be on each of the lots as they get developed. We will meet or exceed all setbacks required. As Scott said, we do have a shared pylon on the corner. On the specific uses, we do have three agreements that are signed until we have the final leases done. We've been asked not to reference who the users are, but I will say that we do have car wash as was asked by Mr. and Mrs. Bregelman. And we do have a couple of restaurant type of uses that will also be coming in. On, I'll talk specifically because the question was asked on the car wash site in relationship to the Bregelman home. We did flip that site around, if you look at it. So in a previous plan, the building is closer to the home and the parking was on the east side. Now we've kind of flipped it around and recycled how cars will move through. There's about 16 feet from the property line to the back of the curb. City setback requirement is six. Obviously, we have more room than that. The idea is we will get that landscape a little heavier than normal so we can screen that. My guess is pine trees would work the best because that'll give you year-round screening. Not big fans of privacy fences because that can cause security issues on both sides. Somebody hiding on either side of the fence can cause a safety issue. So we'll do that and we can create a small burn there to make sure that headlights going head in to the west facing the homestead will be blocked by a, by a, that's easy enough to do. Let's, you know, general, our general design, just so everyone knows, again, we are buying the Ferber parcel. We do, there is a shoreland setback that we have to meet and we will meet. If anyone's walked the property, it drops off pretty severely at the end. It's relatively flat and then it drops off. So that'll be, we'll stay away from the setback. We will have stormwater ponding on the site. We haven't shown it yet. It's going to actually be on the Ferber property for the entire site. We'll work as best as we can for comprehensive building design, knowing that you're going to have a bunch of national tenants and they all have their own look. So we'll try to grab some compatibility where we can. As Scott said, we, you know, we have to meet all setbacks, lighting requirements. I think the lighting requirement here is a half a foot candle at the property line, if I remember right. I think that is correct. So the fixtures typically are shielded in the back, down lighting, and you'll have to meet that standard. My guess is, last time when I drove home late, the lights from County Road 1 will be more intrusive than a backlit light on that property is my suspicion. Again, you know, we're bringing in a bunch of goods and services here that don't exist today. They are in St. Cloud, some of them, but they're not here. We'll be adding tax base and we're cleaning up what we've understood is a big problem in the community. So with that, I will sit down and I'll be available later for questions.
Thank you.
I have some really important information.
If anyone else is wishing to testify, you're able to.
First off, we always like to have copies because those maps are about impossible to read. Can we have copies to take home?
We can see if it looks like we're handing them out right now.
The other thing that I think everybody would be very interested to know is Sherri Follow lives two houses down from us and she has sold her property to the developers. She left me a message two days ago that said, "Mr. Ferber is in a nursing home. He has some major physical health issues." So I can't attest to that, but she's usually pretty accurate in what she says. Just wanted to share that. Don't know for sure or not, but that's what she says. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify on the matter of River Crossing's preliminary plat? Third and final call, anyone wishing to testify on River Crossings? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Council, any other questions, discussion? Go ahead, Jill. Jill?
This is maybe a question for the developer. Do you have a sense for when construction would start? And is that contingent on solidifying additional leases? Or do you have commitments in place that would allow you to start construction as soon as this process is completed?
It's a little bit of both. We are planning, the closings that we have per contract will happen in August. And again, we've got to, we've got to go through some city process of reviewing our plans, but the idea would be to start yet this fall with some site work. And if it's okay, Mrs. Bregelman asked about Mr. Ferber. I just heard it today. My understanding is he just, he fell and he's in a rehab facility for an injury to his leg. And I just heard about it about an hour ago. So, but we're still under contract there. But our plan is to try and get going yet this fall.
And then, as it relates to the site itself and construction vehicles, do you have a plan in place? And then, uh, as it relates to the site itself and construction vehicles, do you have a plan in place for?
They'll use the public. They'll use the public roadway.
Through River Oaks Drive?
Yes, and because I don't know that the county will let us access from the county road.
Okay. Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions or comments?
I do have a couple of comments, um, with that, you know, a couple of things is, you know, first of all, I was not in favor of this development and I think I was one of the only ones that, that didn't like it, just because I know. Uh, from some of the comments of the realtors and people in the area, of how some of these homes were acquired, uh, but that's a separate issue, um. The biggest problem that I have in looking at this map right now is that car wash and where it sits in relationship to the neighbors' homes. When we first started talking about this, um, a few months ago, we were told that, yeah, that was just a concept, but that's probably not what was gonna go there. So again, I think we were misled on that, um, I'm, I'm very frustrated with that, I would ask, uh, Paul, um. You know, Paul, I'll, I'll try to be as professional as I can about this, but imagine that next door to that, car wash is your house, would you want to sit and listen to that air dryer going on and off day and night? Um, I've seen this happen in other cities. Is there any way you could take and move that to a different part of that development? My understanding is that was not gonna go there, that that was just a rendering.
Well, I think that was a concept plan, but we've always talked about the car wash on that site, so I will state that, I think, I don't know, I've never said it, it won't go there. Because that's always where it was, what we did do though, it was talked about and the proximity was discussed, so we flipped the building around. And we're trying to get it done, get it moved away, there are noise ordinances, we, we tried to reposition it so the noise will get away from the residence and more towards the, the county road. Again, I was out there earlier today, I've been out there a few times, I would tell you that the traffic on the road is fairly noisy, I, again, I can point to a couple of examples in, in other cities. Where there is a car wash and there are residences right across the street, um, yeah, I, I don't know what the cutoff, what, what the noise level, decibel level is off the top of my head, but. They're gonna have to meet that, uh, asked about hours, they typically run from seven, I believe it's seven AM to eight PM, but that will be. Part of a site-specific review and part of the approval of that, we'll have to have that written in.
It's seven days a week.
Typically, yeah, um, I, I guess, you know, again, Paul, I, I go back to, would you want to live next door to that? You know, and I know that you're a developer, you see lines on paper, you see numbers, figures, dollars, I, I get that, but would you want to live next there?
I'll answer it this way, you've asked that a couple of times. I have a house in Eden Prairie that backs up to the Hennepin County Trail, I went into that house, now unfortunately. That, this is gonna sound a little self-serving, I, I know, I know the question to ask and, and most people when they ask the city, I've been through this too many times. That trail was an alignment for the light rail. And as everyone knows, they're spending two billion plus for the light rail and I gotta tell you, it's gonna impact a lot of homes. We knew when we bought the house twenty, twenty years ago, that the light rail could be in our backyard. We knew what the rules were and we said, okay, and actually two twelve wasn't even through. I, I walked my wife down, I said, this is where it's going, this is where we are, we can still hear two twelve, but we knew it was coming. Didn't go to one meeting to complain about it because in my line of work, you understand what to ask. Um, so when you ask, would I buy a home there, I would ask, what could go there and I'd evaluate what could happen. It's exactly what I did in the home we're living in today.
But they were there first and now they're, now they're getting a developer that comes in and wants to put a car wash there.
But the city made a conscious decision to zone, or to guide this parcel to allow that use or these uses. We, we are using and asking for what is there to be rezoned and it was approved, so. I, I get that they were there first, that was a decision that I didn't ask to be made, it was made and now we're working in the box we're given.
So what happens when you build this facility, the structure, and there's too much noise, the neighbors hear it all day long, it would drive me insane if I had to live next to a car wash. Uh, you know, I, you can go by any car wash in this area, anywhere in Minnesota or around the country. And within a half a block, you can hear that, that noise, that sire, that blower going on and off, on and off, all day long. You know, how are we going to protect our resident next door? You could be a half a block away and you could still hear that thing going on and off, why would you put that car wash there? It doesn't make any sense.
I- if there were a bar restaurant there with a patio out there, we'd be having the same conversation.
Could you put an office building there that they turn the lights on and off every day and, and you're done? You know, why, why can't you take one of these other buildings and put it there, switch that car wash and put it out by the?
But again, it's, it's, it's the zoning that is there and we're using, that's where they want to be, that's where it works, so. You know, I, I don't know how to answer your question.
I, I would ask.
Could we do something? Sure, anything could be done.
Treat them as you would want to be treated, okay, that's what I would ask.
Scott, is there any review that's been done on a decibel level event or does it, will it conform as presented, will it conform to our?
We're not gonna know until it's over, until the building's built.
So there hasn't been a site, as I indicated earlier, there has not been a site plan review, um, therefore we have not seen any buildings, um. What we're presenting from a staff level, because that's what we have, is the preliminary plat with the six lots and an outlaw. That's all I have, um, for counsel at this point to review and approve or deny. No site plan has been reviewed because there is not a site plan.
And so, I guess in layman's term, what we're reviewing isn't actually what's on this map tonight, or what we're. What we're agreeing to isn't actually on this map tonight, right?
The map that's up on your screen right now is.
What's in front of us as counsel to make a decision on tonight, correct?
So the site plan that we brought up per what he just requested before was what was on your screen, what is on your screen right now currently. Is the plat and that's what is requesting to be reviewed and approved or denied.
Yep, correct, at a future time, there'll be a site plan review which will include the details of the entities and buildings that'll be there.
Correct.
At that point in time, I'm confident that a engineer, uh, whoever's building a said car wash would be able to provide specs to their blower, which. We can at that point determine based on where you tell us it's gonna be placed, will it meet decibel levels, correct?
Correct, and we'll have to go through our ordinance review and it will need to meet noise and, and lighting, correct?
To council member's cold point, I, I don't believe we need to wait for it to be built to find out if it will meet it right and deal with that, we should be able to deal with that on the front end. To understand noise levels.
Correct, and just from a staff level again. If there is an amendment with the Ferber property, the preliminary plat will be presented to council again, plus we'll have a development agreement along with a final plat, so there's. Multiple steps to be presented to council prior to final.
And that's just what I want us, um, I guess everyone here and watching to understand is tonight, we're approving what is on our screen right now. The speculation of what might be in the boxes, um, can likely change or will likely change, is that fair to say?
That is fair to say yes, and previous there with the preliminary plat, there are typically changes, not saying that that's the case with this one, but there has been changes in the past with plats.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? I do agree with a couple of the comments that have been made tonight, um, around buffering and again, when we get to site plan approval. Um, I think I'm hearing from counsel that there's gonna be a lot of, uh, questions at that point and validation at that point, that buffering is going to meet. Or exceed, uh, between commercial and residential, so again, tonight, uh, we are simply reviewing the preliminary plat. At a future council meeting, there will be a site plan, which is where we'll get into those details and, uh, create some assurances. Um, counsel, any other last things before we call for? Um, I apologize, we have closed the public hearing and, um, it is up for a council discussion now. Seeing none, I would look for a motion, uh, to approve resolution with conditions and preliminary plat.
So moved.
There's a motion, is there a second? There's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Again, I'll reiterate that tonight we are approving the preliminary plat with conditions, there will be a site plan. Review and approval which will take place, which is when we can get into the details as to what is going to be there as well as the setbacks and other conditions that need to be made. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next public hearing we have tonight is Coburn's interim use permit.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, you have in your packets Coburn's Incorporated interim use permit applications, there's two applications within your packet. One for the property of seventeen twenty-five Pine Cone Road South and seven oh seven First Avenue North, both in the city of Sartell. With last year's COVID restrictions, I believe the reason for this re-application was, um. With the restrictions, they weren't able to have the, um, permitted use within their facilities, so they let their application and their permit. They're reapplying for every five years, so and then they, so just to provide some background on this, there's a five-year term within this permit. Once it hits its fifth year, you can reapply and then extend it a year each year, year per review from staff and approval from council. They've exceeded that due to COVID, so they are reapplying. Within the use of this, it is from seven, uh, seven AM until nine PM, it'll be located in their parking lots, there may or may not be some parking restrictions, but the city has dealt with this in the past. The city has a right to review this at any time if there's any safety concerns or any other restrictions or concerns from either. The city level or public level, so they do have the right to inspect, um, essentially what this is is a floral display in a, a produce ten sale within their. Two facilities out in their exterior parking lots, any other questions for staff?
Counsel, any questions for staff before we open the public hearing? Alright, thank you, we'll open the public hearing for Sartell, in, uh, excuse me, Coburn's interim use permit. Anyone wishing to testify, please step forward. Second call on anyone wishing to testify, please step forward. Third and final call. Alright, seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Counsel, any questions on the Coburn's interim use permit? Alright, I'd look for a motion and a second to approve the resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Give that one to Jeff.
Yeah, that's fine, arm wrestle later.
Alright, we have a motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? That carries. Third and final public hearing tonight is Nineteenth Avenue South Preliminary Assessment Hearing.
Excuse me, mayor, members of the council, uh, tonight is our preliminary public hearing for our Nineteenth Avenue South project. I'll give a brief overview of the project and I'll, I'll emphasize the brief as the council has seen this before and I think I've met with, uh, the residents on the project, so I'll. I'll be brief, but obviously stop me and ask questions as needed, but, uh, essentially, uh, next year, twenty twenty-two, uh, we received federal funding, about two million dollars to complete. Improvement to Nineteenth Avenue South, so we're looking, uh, reconstruction from County Road Four up to, uh, Sixth Street South. Generally, the scope is we're widening the existing twenty-four foot rural section road, widening it out to an urban section, so curb and gutter. It'll have three lanes, uh, driveline each direction, center opposing left turn lanes, uh, trail on the west side of Nineteenth Avenue South. Uh, there are some sewer and water improvements throughout as well as storm sewer and stormwater treatment that, that comes along with the project of this scope and magnitude. The other thing of note with the trail on the west side of Nineteenth, we are looking at push-button pedestrian crossing systems at the intersection of Fifteenth Street South. Uh, just schedule wise, uh, we're, we're at the preliminary assessment hearing, this project, the, the plans need to be finalized, reviewed and approved by MINDOT. We are looking to bid this project, you know, late fall, early winter, something in that timeframe, uh, which would set up construction for. The better part of next, uh, summer, if, you know, late April, early May weather dependent and, and likely through, you know, mid to late October. At that point, we, in the fall of twenty twenty-two, we'll also have the final assessment hearing. Uh, this is just a schematic showing the roadway, this, this picture is if you're standing and looking south along the roadway, again, the trail will be on the west side. Uh, these next couple of slides are, are just showing the, the street and storm sewer improvement, storm sewer is shown in red. Of note, uh, on this slide, it is one of the stormwater treatment areas, a, a pond on the Kramer Brothers', uh, property. Uh, again, just more of kind of the same showing the storm sewer that extends throughout the project. Uh, on this slide, of note, uh, near the intersection of Twelve Street North, we are looking to, uh, there's an existing city pond that, that is. Doesn't have any outlets or inlets, kind of an aesthetic pond at this point, we're gonna repurpose that, uh, for stormwater treatment on the project. Sewer to water main improvements, i- i- in general, we have a trunk water main running throughout the corridor, uh, sewer is a little bit, we, we have a, a small stretch from Whippurpool Way. Uh, a few hundred feet south, uh, and extending east and west just to provide some sewer access, the property is on either side of Nineteenth. Uh, on the north end, we're running sewer up, uh, to extend sewer service again to, to both sides of Nineteenth Avenue, the very north portion of this project, uh, actually depicted by this. The red dashed line is what previously was not served by sanitary sewer and what will be, uh, with this project. I'll, I'll gloss over this, it's just a summary of the lengths of the sewer and water, uh, we are looking to have a couple of alternates for trails, so. What we're calling alternate A is to add a trail on the north side of Sixth Street South, kind of filling in the gap between Nineteenth Avenue and Victory Lane. Um, and then the other alternate is on Nineteenth Avenue North, that existing trail from, uh, Third. Street all the way up to the very north end, uh, more of a, a maintenance type project, we'd do a, a reclaim and, and repay for that trail as it's in tough shape and again, we'd bid both of those as alternates, so. Uh, the city council can make the decision whether to include that in the ward or not at that time.
And John, real quick on the alternates, um, because I know I saw some messages about it from residents, alternates are not included in the assessment of the direct properties.
Correct, yep.
I know that's always a clarification that we need to make during the assessment process, so.
Certainly. Uh, lighting improvements, this was something we discussed last, uh, at the feasibility study in the, in the direction, so the, the way we'll move forward is more of kind of that wayfinding lighting, uh, and as. As this corridor would further develop, you'd have the opportunity to infill and, you know, put light poles in the middle kind of a, a scenario. We do need a, a number of easements on these, uh, to build this project, so what's shown in green is temporary easements, uh, certainly a lesser impact, and what's shown as red is permanent, uh, easements that we need. And the next three slides is kind of moving north along the corridor, I have met, I, I, I think with everything affected by easements to, to start those conversations. Uh, estimated project costs, uh, without the alternates, it's about seven million, five hundred ninety-three thousand dollar project, uh, and with the alternates, it's about seven point nine million, so. Again, as we go through the bidding process, we can decide or the council can decide whether to include, uh, the alternates or not. Uh, these are the properties, uh, included in the assessments specifically for the, the public hearing tonight. And the thing to note is how we developed, uh, proposed assessments of this project, um. We engaged an appraiser, uh, Tom Ruland, uh, did an appraisal of all these projects, number one, to help us identify the cost of the easements that we need to make. You know, fair and appropriate offers to the property owners, and number two, to i- identify and recommend, uh, uh, assessments for the project, so he did kind of a before evaluation and an after project evaluation of the properties. And the difference of those two is what is essentially the proposed assessments for each of the properties here tonight, so. The assessments in this case are not actually tied to the cost of the improvements, uh, instead they're, uh, based on the appraisals. With that, I'd, I'd entertain any questions and ultimately the council can open it, uh, open up the, the public forum.
Counsel, before we open the public forum, any questions? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to testify on Nineteenth Avenue South Preliminary Assessment Hearing, please step forward. Please just state your name and address.
Mike Kramer, and, um, I'm here with my wife and my brother. We represent probably the majority of the land that's being affected there along Nineteenth. Uh, we have a century farm, over a century farm, it was a land grant farm from Abraham Lincoln. And I like to go on record to say, we did not choose this, it's being forced on us. It will, um, with the assessments in the, in the amount that's being appraised, uh, will, will result in a significant financial hardship, which I'm not even sure we can afford. It, it, it's, it's destroying. We have no intention immediately of developing this property. Uh, we did try, huh, about some years ago, and it, we landed, landed back in our laps with a back due tax of over, what was it, Mark, a hundred thousand bucks? Which we were nicely told, not told about until it was overdue and said we have sixty days to come up with a hundred grand or you, or we're gonna auction off your farm. Um, and we feel like we're getting the same job again. This is not, uh, something that's in our interest. And for us to have to pay assessments well in excess of eighty thousand dollars of what you're willing to pay us, doesn't seem to be right. This is, this isn't the way I ever anticipated that we should be treated. This is, does not bring value to us. And maybe it will someday to our, our, our kids, if they ever get a chance to, to still have the farm. But when you're talking to come up with that kind of money, uh, and, and I understand it's deferred assessments, however, um, I'm told that in twenty years they come due, whether you want them to or not, and you have to pay them. Um, and if we, you know, if we or our heirs don't have that eighty thousand bucks, what happens? I think you foreclose and you, you take whatever it is that you want, which is what you're doing now. Um, it's very discouraging that, that we have very little say in what's going on here. You know, we could try to go through the condemnation process, but in our visits with attorneys, they said, well, that's kind of a lose-lose. We end up paying beaucoup bucks for, for attorney fees. Um, so I guess my appeal is a couple of things, one, I believe the assessment or the appraisal that was given by Mr. Ruland, and I don't mean to demean him in any way, he's very professional and everything, but I believe he lowballed it, which I can understand, um, and we, we are in the process of getting an, another appraisal, uh, which should be done in not too long. And the second thing is the assessment. I just don't understand why we should be made to, to pay an assessment that, that we really had no dealings with or wanting to, to have. The other thing that's interesting is in our paperwork that we did receive from Mr. Ruland, uh, there's two sections, one is the basis on which they made the assessment, uh, or the appraisal. And they're, they're couched in so many cents per square foot, which is interesting. And the other is then, what is the worth, the assessments then are based on what is the value, the improvement, quote-unquote, that's made. Well, interestingly, on the biggest parcel, I won't go, we've got three parcels, actually four in this mix, which accounts for most of that distance, as I mentioned. Um, the, the appraisal, uh, the amount on which they said, here's what your, your land is worth, was, um, thirty-five cents an acre, or thirty-five cents a square foot. And after the improvements, after the, the completion of the project, then our, uh, value of that, the improvement worth would be thirty-three s- s- cents per square foot. So, but I'm not very good at math, never have been, but to my thinking, thirty-five is more than thirty-three, so where the heck is the assessment coming, where's the value? You know, and it's appraised at thirty-five cents a square foot before the improvements are made and then thirty-three cents afterwards? I'm sorry, that doesn't wash with me, so. My long story to bring it to a close is where we feel very, uh, abused about this, this is something we, we have had no control. And, and this is a, a heritage farm that's been in the family for all these years and, um, to have it basically forced out of our hands by something like this would be tragic, in my opinion, so. That's all I'd have, and I certainly like your graces to reconsider, uh, what's being done.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify on the Nineteenth Avenue South Preliminary Assessment Hearing?
My name is Corida Hayne, my land borders Veterans Drive and Nineteenth Avenue South. Um, I just wanna reiterate what Mike said. It's a tragedy, it makes me very sad, it makes me angry that, that people can just come in and take away our, our property, just because. There's no logic, not, no logical reason to do this. They're putting in a walking path, who's gonna walk on that path? There's, I've got ten acres, people next to me have thirty, there's eighty acres. Who's gonna walk on this path that's ripping up our front yards? We don't need three lanes on that road, I've grown up, I grew up in that neighborhood, been out here over sixty years. There's nothing wrong with the road. Um, years ago, I came to the Polisac Township Council. I asked for no passing zone when my children were starting to drive, because, excuse me, the people would come off of County Four and kick it and be doing sixty by the time they hit my driveway. I asked for no passing zone. They gave me one. Going toward Veterans Drive. Didn't make any sense, but we weathered that. My kids are grown now and gone, and, um, there's just no need for this, this whole road situation. If you wanna resurface the road, go ahead and resurface it. But there's no need for the walking path, there's no need for the three lanes, there's no need for the, the turnaround you're gonna, or the block that you wanna put on County Four. It's just, and if, and if, in my particular yard, if, if you're, if I were to wanna put up a privacy fence, um, because of the amount of permanent easement that you want, I wouldn't even have half of my front yard left anymore. So, that's, it just makes me sad. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify on Nineteenth Avenue South Preliminary Assessment?
Hi, I'm Louise Bronchankel, and I own it from the roundabout on the right side going up. You assessed me at a hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars, one hundred. I think it's ridiculous. I only have twenty-two acres. I inherited it from my mom and dad. That's all I have. I see no sense, and now I put it up for sale because I have to sell it. Because your assessment is way too high for me, I can't afford it. We live on social security, how the hell am I gonna pay two hundred thousand dollars? I just wanted to let you know, I agree with all these other people.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify on the Nineteenth Avenue?
Diane Fish, I'm here with my husband Dan, seventeen, I want Nineteenth Avenue South. We live at the top of the hill, and we've already talked to John about the assessment with the added value, which I wanna make a point that there is not really an added value. They're taking away our privacy, adding the walking path, there's more traffic, more foot traffic, and the water line they're gonna stub in may help our house at some point, but the water and sewer, a combination, is already at the back of our property, where I think it's Twentieth Avenue, but comes right up to our property. So, the road project technically does not give us a future potential advantage because it's already on our property. Same with my parents next door, they already have access to water and sewer, so any assessments you're adding for an increased value at some point is already there. So those assessments are excessive.
Thank you. Last call on anyone wishing to testify on the Nineteenth Avenue Assessments. Alright, we'll close the public hearing. I've got a couple of questions, but I'm assuming, uh, we can cover them quickly, um, council likely has the same. Uh, John, I'll probably to you, uh, second, uh, they talked about doing a second appraisal, just probably getting another opinion, um, how does that work? Uh, is that a frequent occurrence?
It happens occasionally, the property owners do have the right to get a second appraisal, uh, typically what I've seen in the past is you, you now have two appraisals with, you know, varying opinions, uh, and, you know, typically it's settled out somewhere in the middle of that, that's what I've seen in the past, we have one or maybe two examples of this on our twenty eighteen Pine Cone Road North project.
Okay. Um, wanted to hit on deferred assessment. Um, as I looked through the packet, a substantial amount of our assessments are all deferred assessments, which means they are not due now. They are due, my understanding, upon plating of the property or doing something different with the property from what it is now. Is the twenty-year cap, is that true? I hadn't heard that prior.
We, we've got our city attorney here that I might have chime in, I've always understood it to be thirty years.
Thirty years, okay. So there's a cap at thirty years, if not paid by thirty years, process would be to, uh, be due at that point in time?
It would be due and paid on that thirty.
Yep, okay. Um, and the last one I have is the assessment, uh, I believe to the Fish Properties. They talked about having utilities now.
Yeah, and, and Diane and I had spoke about this maybe a week ago, um, and kinda had a different understanding that we've shared with Tom Ruland, and I think he's kind of agreed, and he's looking at making some adjustments to yours based on that. You know, I don't think he realized that there was sewer and water on the backside of their property.
Are you available, so?
Both, both yours as, as well as, uh, Bechtold's, uh, he's looking at kinda with some new information at light here, so.
I, I feel like we ran into some of that on, um, maybe the East Side project as well, where there was access or, um, differently, so, okay, uh, council, that's all I had from, um, what I was hearing, need an answer?
Couple of questions.
Else?
One is, we had a resident reach out to us about future lighting and wiring that would no longer work. Do you have any opinion on how long, if we were to have that future lighting, how long that wire lasts for usually, or?
Typical lifespan of a lighting system, you know, the wiring and the lights themselves, we always figure about twenty-five years. Um, the difference with this project versus that one, um, that was conduit and some portions of wire put in under, you know, it was, that was a, kind of a different situation, this will be an active lighting system that we could go in and I, I don't see any issues in the next, say, five to ten years, plopping light poles in the middle to, to beef up that lighting design, if you will.
And the other one is with the center turn lane, do we feel, when we drop that hill at three, three and a half feet, there's not a lot of places to turn on top of that hill, but with people coming both ways to effect, there's enough visibility to avoid any issues? Cars come both directions, I hope.
Yeah, correct, so like I said, that, that is a good point, maybe one I should have highlighted here, I have, like, again, talked to each of these property owners, I think, but we are taking roughly three to three and a half feet off the top of the hill, and that is to meet state design standards for safety and visibility, so yes, I, I feel confident that this road is designed for a forty mile per hour speed limit, and you'll have good visibility over that hill traveling at that speed.
Council, any other questions? Jill?
I just wanted to clarify that with the deferred assessment, um, you're saying even if nothing changes, it's due in thirty years. Correct, okay. And then we also received feedback about the holding pond, um, that was proposed, do you have any comment on that, or?
Yeah.
I think that there were some drainage concerns.
Correct, I'll, I'll intend to follow up with, with that property owner directly, but I, I don't think there's a concern there, this pond doesn't have any inlets or outlets currently, it's completely disconnected from that daybreak drainage system that her concern is related to, so I think, you know, once I explain that to her, I, I hope that kind of answers that question.
Thanks.
Tim?
I had a question, um, in regards to capping on the, uh, assessments, is, I know that there is some related to in-town values of houses and is there a, any kind of capping or state help or, you know, ability for the assessments to kind of be softened?
One of the things, we do have some unique properties out here when it comes to, you know, our assessment policy at a front-foot basis doesn't really apply, hence us going, you know, kind of skipping that step and just going right to an appraisal to estimate these values. Uh, what, one of the things, there are some unique properties in the sense that you've got several parcels where it's eight or ten acres and one house on it, and so that's why you see some footnotes at the bottom of, uh, the assessments, where if just that house connects and nothing else develops on the other eight acres of that parcel, they pay that eight thousand dollars that the council has obviously seen before in other assessments. And then the remaining additional, uh, assessment on that property would only come due if and when they would subdivide and, and develop further, you know, properties on that parcel.
Council, any other questions? Certainly not a, just, uh, certainly not a easy decision for us, uh, as council. Um, people are impacted, this is, uh, as we talked about Century Farms. Um, and, uh, this is a well-traveled road, um, becoming a pretty significant road within our community. And so the challenge is to, uh, to weigh the pros and cons of the overall community while being fair to the property owners along the route as well, so. We appreciate all the testimony tonight, and certainly I think we all understand it. Uh, council, um, asked for us tonight is, uh, a approval of the resolution as presented. Is there a motion to do so? We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second, any other deliberation or comments? Uh, John, real quick, uh, final assessment hearing is when?
It'll be the fall of twenty twenty-two, so construction might not be one hundred percent complete, but it'll be largely complete, and again, very similar to this, you'll receive notices in the mail, you know, three, four weeks in advance, uh, with what would be your final assessment, uh, figures.
Uh, we have a motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next up is old business, we have County Road One Final Design.
Mayor, members of the council, uh, this evening for your consideration is final plan approval and municipal consent, uh, for the County Road One project. Um, gonna highlight for you some of the changes that have been made to the plan set in working with Stearns County and Sartell, um, in doing the feasibility study and also holding a public informational meeting. There are a number of comments received from the public, um, mainly around safety issues, so just wanna kind of highlight some of the changes that have been made to the plans, uh, since the preliminary, uh, plans were presented to you. Um, again, the, the project, County Road One Street, new utility improvements, uh, will be a full reconstruct and utility improvements from Sartell Street north to, uh, Twelfth Street North along the river. Some of the improvements that, uh, are being made are around the pedestrian crossings. Um, two locations, there are going to be pedestrian islands added between Watab and Veterans Park is one of between Watab and Veterans Park is one of those locations, and then also at Seven, Seventh Street North. Um, so that'll provide a safe location for pedestrians when they're crossing, so they'll only have to cross one lane of traffic before having a, a safe place, uh, before crossing the other lane of traffic. Um, based on MinDOT's best practices for pedestrian and bike safety, um, this safety aspect has been, uh, shown to reduce up to fifty-six percent of the pedestrian crashes. Uh, there are two other locations, uh, where there are improved crosswalks, and that would be a push-button rapid flashing beacons, similar to what is on Pine Cone today. Uh, PowerPoint up there says Seventh Street North and Twelfth Street North. It's actually at Fourth Street North, um, and Twelfth Street North. Again, these are showing to have a forty-seven percent reduction in vehicle pedestrian crashes. So just wanted to kind of highlight some of the, um, pedestrian crossing improvements that are being made. Um, also adding two radar speed signs, feedback, uh, both ends of the project. So one on Sartell Street for northbound traffic, and then also one at Twelfth Street North for southbound traffic. Um, highlighting for drivers what their speeds are, um, helping to remind them that they are in a residential area and within the city and, uh, to watch their speed. Wanted to highlight the pedestrian trail. There have been a lot of comments back on the pedestrian trail. Um, the final plans as presented tonight, uh, include a eight-foot wide paved pedestrian trail on the east side of the, of the roadway for the entire project length from Sartell Street to Twelfth Street North. Um, in doing surveys with the community, um, the community as a whole really encourages the city to embrace the river. Um, pedestrian trails are a highlight in the community, and it really, this trail will really expand, um, that pedestrian system. It's also gonna help complete a couple of trail gaps, um, both at Twelfth Street and at Seventh Street to really, um, connect all of the pedestrian paths, uh, within the city. Uh, keeping the trail on the east side for the entire length, um, really prevents the trail bouncing back and forth along the County Road One corridor, which also provides, provides safety, um, and it also limits the number of pedestrian crossings. The trail is proposed as an off-road and grade separated trail, which means it will be offset, or there'll be a slight boulevard in most areas between the roadway and the trail, and it'll be grade separated. So there will be a curb, uh, between the roadway and the trail. Um, in having off-road and grade separated, again, sixty-five to eighty-nine percent reduction in crashes involving pedestrians walking along that, uh, roadway. Um, lighting improvements, um, kind of finalized the lighting design, uh, wanted to highlight a couple of things. So along the trail, the entire way, there'll be wa, wave-finding lighting, um, ten-foot poles. These poles will include outlets for the city's use, which will be energized when the lights are on, um, throughout the evening, and they are gonna be spaced approximately a hundred and fifty feet apart. Roadway lighting, um, from Sartell Street to Seventh Street North, um, which is the picture on the, the bottom left there. There's a number of existing Cobra Lights on, um, wood posts. Those posts house just those lights, so we are proposing to remove those posts and to put in the city standard streetlights at those locations. Um, from Seventh Street North to Twelfth Street North, which is the other picture, as you can see, there's a lot of overhead power, um, primarily on the west side of the road, but it, there's some on both sides of the road. And so looking to keep the Cobra Lights, um, on those Excel poles, and then, um, the trail lighting would be though included on the east side of that roadway. Um, lighting also provides, um, safety aspect, especially at crosswalks. So we are making sure that all the crosslock, walk locations have adequate lighting, um, which has been shown and proven to provide, um, significant safety and comfort for people crossing. Um, bridge lighting, um, are proposing two different lights on the proposed pedestrian bridge. One would be lighting the pathway, um, so the cross braces would include lights along that. And then, uh, the picture with the, the green lights would be lighting up the bridge itself, um, similar to what is shown on the screen. The, the bridge lighting that would kind of light up the structure itself would be color-changing and would be, um, be able to be changed remotely by staff. Um, pedestrian bridge, some feedback from the council, um, when we were out on the bridge was to add some overlooked areas, people, so they can kind of be on that walkway and not impede other people moving along that path. And so, working with our structural group, um, they were comfortable adding four locations, uh, twenty-six feet wide, um, by four foot in depth to provide kind of that space for people to, um, enjoy the views on the bridge. Um, also planning to add, um, historical information at that turnaround, um, some information about the bridge and, and Sartell. Um, also pr- pr- um, providing some improvements to Watab and Veterans Park. Uh, there'll be a number of parking improvements to Watab Park. Um, again, this is one of the improved crosswalk locations with the pedestrian island. Um, at Veterans Park, the existing parking is, uh, being removed. However, in working with the adjacent property owner to the south, um, and configuring their parking lot with this adjacent property, we will be able to provide a couple handy, handicap parking stalls for, uh, the Veterans Park. The remaining parking, um, that's showing up there would be private parking lot, uh, for that property to the south. Um, of note, we were able to do this relatively inexpensive. That location of those parking improvements is the location of an existing sanitary sewer that will be replaced. So that entire area will be ripped up for utility installation, um, so it'd be restoring that area back with the handicap parking. Uh, the existing monuments for Veterans Park will remain as is, and will be tying in the proposed trail and sidewalks, um, to provide connection for viewing of those monuments. Um, one other thing I wanted to highlight, um, when we were talking about trail improvements, um, a question was asked, um, specifically um, more between Seventh and Twelfth Street North as to the landscape impacts, um, that that trail would, um, have, and at the time, the trail would not and still does not impact a number of those landscape features. However, in looking at the service locations for water and sewer replacement, um, unfortunately, a lot of the water and sewer locations for those services do impact a number of the, um, landscape features. One pictured on here is some retaining walls, um, that we found will be impacted because we need to connect their water and sewer services, um, and a couple other locations you can, hard to see on here, a couple other locations. So again, the trail is not causing these impacts. There's also a few trees that will be lost in this corridor and along the entire corridor because of the utility replacements, um, not because of the trail, um, some additional driveway, um, impacts and restorations. Um, anything that is impact with the utility replacement will be restored to its current condition. Uh, project schedule, next steps, um, again, this is a county-led project. Jody Tyke, the county engineer is here this evening, and do you have any questions for her? Um, so city approval will be pending state aid review and also county review and approval, um, which will take place August, September. Um, the mi- municipal consent, uh, gives the county the authority to bid the, the project for the city, with the city improvements included with the project. Um, construction hopefully starts sometime this winter if weather allows, but majority will take place in twenty twenty-two. Um, final paving and punch list would take place in twenty twenty-three. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Council, any questions? Um, seeing none yet. Uh, question I have, um, was on the pathway lighting.
Mm-hmm.
I know we had, uh, some discussion, um, at council about that. One of the concerns I have, we talked about, uh, wave-finding lighting, but so if I live across the street, I'm looking out at the river, I'm gonna have streetlights in front of me, and then almost immediately behind the streetlights, we're gonna have these wave-finding lights. I, I guess my opinion tells me it's gonna be a very, very well-lit area. Is there anything we can do? And I'd like to hear from council on their thoughts of this lighting as well, but, uh, anything we can do to not have the open globe at the top, but really force the light down so it's far less light pollution in that area? Just knowing the proximity of the trail to the road on Linear Park? Council, any thoughts on that, or?
I would agree with that. Um, I, I'm not too schooled on, uh, different lighting designs. There's gotta be something out there that would direct that, that light is straight down more so, uh, than out away from that area. And again, we have it lighting on the street as well, um, it's really gonna light that area up.
Yeah, we can definitely look at a, a different type of light that would direct it down. The streetlight that's being proposed is replacing lights where they are existing today, so there won't be additional street lighting added. It would just replace what's there. Um, the light, trail lighting unit that's proposed matches your more, uh, residential streetlights, but we can definitely look at something that aims more down towards the trail.
I, I remember, um, I think it was a resident talking about just the canopy, you know, visibility as you're driving down that road, and, and I think the last thing I want to see us do is throw in a bunch of lights that are gonna light that thing up all night long, right, and really lose the appeal that River Road has for us in the community. Um, there's plenty of other roads that, that are well-traveled and well-lit that, um, I don't know that we need to make River Road that. But any other thoughts on that from council?
Is there a certain gauge of lumen or something like that with those lights? I mean, or do they self-dim? I know the ones that are on nineteenth self-dim by traffic or, or walkway. Is that something that's reasonable, expensive, or?
I can definitely ask our lighting group. Um, it will obviously add costs to the, the project, um, but it's something we can look into. Um, I will say we, you know, there is a lighting standard for lighting a pedestrian trail. Um, we are not meeting that, um, to try and not flood the area with light, um, which is why we have the hundred and fifty-eight foot spacing. But I can ask if there's, um,
I know that was a concern that we talked about, and I think you guys are addressing this with this, and, and I've seen this used around the lake and, and, and whatever, so it's, it's attractive lighting. It's just, I want to make sure that we're conscious of the light pollution along the river because it will travel, so.
Excuse me, council, if you want to think about walking around Lake Francis, there we have down.
Yeah.
There we have down trail lights.
Yeah.
Visualize something.
Yeah, absolutely. And so when you're there on the trail, it feels well-lit, but from passing by on Pine Cone, it doesn't seem like it's lit up that well outside of Country Light Festival. Um, the other comment that I would make on the overall plan, and I've heard from a number of residents, we all have, um, by phone and by email. If I boil everything that I've heard down, it's, it's all about safety, right? A lot of people talked about the speed. I do think the radar feedback signs is gonna help drive down the speed. Um, I've went, traveled this road a number of times as we've been talking about it. I found myself going a little bit faster, coming southbound, and it's like, it, it's easy to do, and I think the, the feedback signs is what's gonna drive that down for us. And then pedestrian, and, uh, there's been a lot of discussion, west side or east side, where should it be? And a lot of the feedback, regardless of which side you prefer it on, is all about safety. Um, and so I think, as I look at this project, how do we make this the safest it can be for the traveling public and the pedestrians of our community that are traveling on it as well? Um, I like the islands at, at Seventh and at Sartell Street. I think that's significant improvement. I think the LED flashers are significant improvements for us to help people cross over. The only other, um, safety item, I, I guess I'd ask about would be Twelfth Street. So that's a, gonna be a pretty significant trail connection. If the trail's on the east side, is there an ability to have an island at Twelfth? Meaning we'd have Twelfth, we'd have Seventh, and we'd have Sartell Street, which are all gonna be kind of major crossing over a river road.
We did look at whether or not we could add a, an island there. It becomes difficult because we're tying back into the county road at that location, and there isn't a center turn lane. So there's a center turn lane when you're, uh, crossing between the parks that make it easy for an island to put in. And then at Seventh, we added that left turn lane, which then also creates the space for that pedestrian island. We don't have that same, um, geometrics on Twelfth Street, and then it, it is hard to tie back into the existing roadway. So we will provide, um, crosswalk lighting there, the flasher system, and that radar, um, speed, uh, sign will also be at that location.
Would it make sense to move the radar flasher up a little bit? And the reason I ask is if you've got radar feedback and a pedestrian feedback all at the same time, is that visually distracting or confusing, I guess?
Um, so our designers are looking at that and making sure that they're placed, um, so that they are visible.
Great. Council, other questions? Jill?
Not a question, just a comment. I agree with the mayor in that we received a lot of feedback on this project, um, and also agree it kind of centered back to, to safety concerns and just thank the engineering team for, for addressing that like they have. I think that the solution brought forward is, is, um, a good solution. Um, one of the challenges I see with that road today is that it's, you have avid bikers, and you have recreational bikers, and you have walkers, and you have joggers all on the road. And it's a county road, and people drive at fast speeds like we've talked about. So I think the solution is good from an overall general use perspective, too. Thanks.
Any other questions, comments? If not, we'd look for a motion to approve the resolution, uh, approving plans.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the, uh, the plans as design.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? That carries. Next item under old business is DNR water demand restrictions.
Good evening, mayor, members of the council. Uh, as you're aware of, uh, Friday.
Well, yeah, let's go, just a minute, thanks.
Alright, good evening, mayor, members of the council. Uh, as you know, on Friday, July sixteenth, the DNR notified all cities to implement their water reduction plan to fifty percent above your January flows. Um, that is in a, in our water supply plan is, is the reduction that they're asking us to get to. Uh, on Monday, July nineteenth, a- as the city staff met, and we met with other cities, um, to put in some reductions, we went and notified all residents that we'd go to ask them to go to two days a week to try to reduce the, the water flows. Uh, the city of Saint Joe on Monday went to a full water ban, and the city of Wade Park went to a full water ban. Uh the city of Saint Joe on Monday went to a full water ban and the city of Wade Park went to a full water ban on Monday. Saint Cloud, us and uh Suck Rapids all went to the two days a week to try to do some reductions. Um for the cities, all cities are gonna be different to what the reductions to to meet this, you know, to meet this fifty percent. So every city's gonna have a a different way of achieving the reduction. Uh as you can see in the chart, um we reduced to get to that two million, that's when we went to our full water ban earlier in June. To get to the two million mark and that wasn't a DNR, you know, implemented plan, but we can see what we need to do to get to that mark. Uh what you see today in the rivers and the ponds and everything is is what's happening underground. Our our aquifers and everything is not being recharged. We keep taking all that water out and we're not putting any back to recharge, so so it's 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 happening. Down below is what's happening is up top, so I think we need to be cognizant of that, that, you know, we need to 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 be good stewards of the environment. And and watch what we're doing, there's there's just not any recharge going on. Um there's another point here that that's gonna fall into place, uh the DNR gives us an appropriation permit. Um I think our last appropriation permit was, I don't even know when we got the last one, within the last ten years. We're appropriated eight hundred and twenty-five million gallons a year. That permit doesn't change until you go over it. Uh last year we were at seven hundred and sixty-one, so we're probably creeping up until we're gonna get over that eight twenty-five this year. Then we have to go back to the DNR and ask for, you know, an amendment to that appropriation permit to get more water. And the first things they're coming back to ask is, you know, what are your, you know, your water saving, you know, reductions? What are you doing, you know, to 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 be good stewards and save on on water flows? So I think if we've if we don't follow some of the DNR recommendations here, this could come back in in, you know, in years to come. And and uh not be a good sign with the DNR. Uh in two thousand nineteen roughly, between there and now, it looks like we've lost about three foot, three feet in our aquifers. You know, just by what we're seeing on some of our, some of our static drawdowns, looks like we're, you know, so we so we are have been losing water. Actually in our aquifer that we're using, so it, you know, it is a reduction. Um we also got some other chemical issues, our chemical suppliers are telling us we're getting in short demand of chemicals. So our, you know, we're just, we keep creeping up and using more water and more chemicals, more every, you know, everything, it just seems to kinda keep coming in and. And snowballing on you, um. Some of the goals, Suck Rapids, you know, their goal is to get down to one point five, like I said, every city's gonna be different. Wade Park's gotta get down to nine hundred and fifty thousand, Saint Cloud's gotta get down to about ten million, I'm not sure what Saint Joe's is. So ours is is roughly two million gallons a day we they're asking us to get down to. Um these restrictions were put in place in nineteen eighty-eight, the last time this happened. And lasted for roughly seventeen days when that when when the reduction, when the restrictions went in. So what we're asking, and I guess what we're looking for tonight is some direction. Is the council prepared to, you know, go to the full ban to get down to that that reduction?
Council. Um what are your thoughts on full ban or what John has presented?
I can start, um you know, John, I trust you, um I trust your opinion and that you'll tell us what you think is right. Um do you think as of right now today, we need a full ban, or do you think we can maintain on a two two day?
Um we put the two day in, what what did they say, last Tuesday, I think we put in an act, um and you know, it varies with the rain. Um you know, so last Sunday, we were at like four point nine. Uh Sunday and Monday, them are always our high days, Sundays are our highest day, so Monday, we we put into, you know, we put out the news release for the two days. And then we got, so we we got down to three point eight, you know, three point seven, we got a little rain, um you know, we were at two point nine yesterday. So it, you know, it just varies, but yeah, I I I'm in agreeance that I think the full ban should go into effect. I mean, I think we really gotta look at saving, you know, saving our water supplies. And I, you know, again, you gotta follow what the the DNR is is stating in the Minnesota Department of Health. You know, some of the another letter came out this last Friday and, you know, some of the words are strongly encouraged and, you know, conservation measures. And and some of them things, you know, so they 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 are serious about this and I think it is serious.
I would say that, you know, the people that are paying attention, they understand that there's an extreme drought. We don't uh, we don't go through this all the time, but I would think the residents would understand at this point, we have a major problem.
John, can you get some more information on just education we're doing for people that have violated or repeat offenders on house tripping? Being on those that aren't following?
Well, we do have an administrative fine of a hundred dollars if it is not followed. Um again, hand watering is fine, you know, water your flowers, water your plants, you know, we're not, we're not taking away hand watering. Uh so so that is one thing that we, you know, we stress that there's, you know, you can keep hand watering your plants and flowers. Um other than that, I it, you know, we can give exemptions for new lawns, all exemptions will be approved by myself. So um we'll go out, take a peek, take a look, see what you got going and, you know, we'll be, you know, we will give exemptions through City Hall. For any brand new lawns.
Yeah, I kinda agree with Jeff is switching situations like this where I'm not, obviously an expert on it, I'll refer to John's opinion. Or obviously the DNR sees the seriousness of the situation, so I would agree with Jeff.
Um I I guess I view this differently than the dip that we're showing on the screen, right, that was a supply problem. We didn't have the supply at the time, we had to enact that. This decision now truly is um a conservation effort, which you've you've highlighted. I I guess I um we're in the midst of putting in a sprinkler system in the in the fall here. Uh the sprinkler guy I talked to last week, he's putting in like ten sand points this week alone, right? So when we talk about the aquifer and that, we can take it away from coming out of our pumps, but. When we look at all the irrigators around on the on the farms and and now sand points going in, there's so much that we can control. Um I feel. And then had some pretty good discussion with um different lawn care. Uh professionals or or owners and we absolutely are going to kill their grass, right? If if we have a ban, uh we don't know how long the ban's going to be, but it absolutely will kill the grass versus go dormant. And so um I'm I'm in much more inclined that we show conservation efforts. Which is what that DNR is is asking us to do and and asking us to get down to the January fifty percent of the January levels, but. Um I see the dips and. If we can enforce two days a week and and select those two days versus just saying you can only water two days a week, right? If even waters Monday and Wednesday and odd can only water Tuesday, Thursday. And not water eight to between eight AM and eight PM, I s- you drive around right now and you see a lot of people watering at one in the afternoon on a ninety degree day. They're absolutely just wasting the water, right? Um but more clear expectations, I guess, I feel, or even going to one day a week. From what I'm told will allow it to go dormant versus kill it and have to spend thousands putting a new yard in next year, right? That's that's a real cost that our residents are going to have to pay in the spring if this goes on beyond. Uh a couple of weeks of a complete ban, so um. I I did read the the DNR emails and I. Agree it's it's a delicate balance right now and they're they're not as much forcing us as strongly encouraging us. And I I do think we should be a good steward of it and I think being a good steward is acting upon it, um not sitting on our hands, but. That's where that balance becomes is how far do we go, do we do a complete ban or do we act on it and have incremental and if. You know, eh help educate the public too, right? If we can't get to the certain level through proper watering. We will have to continue to go to the next phase, which ends up being a complete shut off at some point, but. Um that's that's my take on it, I am concerned about the the lawns and and the costs that everyone will incur in the spring. By having a complete ban.
One other point, the next phase of the DNR is you're down to twenty-five percent of your January flows. That's when, if it goes into the next phase, so that's, you know, that's a whole other ballgame of how we're gonna try to meet that.
And then the phase after that is the governor's orders.
Governor's orders, yeah.
I would say, you know, educating the the public about good water conservation might be a good option for now. And do continue with the two day, two day a week, um I don't know if if it doesn't have certain days, maybe people aren't home those days or whatever, so that might not be an issue. But um you know, just really putting some on our website possibly about what really is good water conservation. We live in the land of ten thousand lakes, we don't seem to have to deal with this very often, so.
True.
I think that um if we get the message, the green message out there and conservation message. Um and we leave it up to our residents to, instead of us stepping on them, I think if we leave it up to our residents. I think we have responsible residents that live here, I think they understand the the magnitude of what's going on or will, or we can help them understand. I think then at that point, people will will start to self-police themselves with awareness. Um I I just think that um. We do have a lot of wells and sand points and all that stuff, so are those affected by this DNR, I mean?
They're they're not really out on the private or the egg right now, I mean, they're talking to them about being conservative, but, you know, you don't see a lot on that. You know, they're really going after the public water supplies right now.
Right, it's kind of the mass, the masses.
Yeah.
Um I I would, I would agree um with a a two day kind of m- modified. Message out there saying we are in a drought and we are at the breaking point of locking it down again, so. Um if we drive home that message, I think that we'll see some public awareness and and understanding and self pol- uh policing. Um and hopefully we can make a dent and in a month from now, if we don't see any progress and we we feel that it's not going the way we wanna go. And maybe the DNR steps in before then or the gov- you know, governor, but I I I think that we can be, you know. A green city by polis- uh policing ourselves as residents.
So the notice we put out last week was two days a week, odd even, you know, Tuesdays and that will help me here. Tuesdays and Mondays and Wednesdays and Tuesdays and Fridays, I believe. So, you know, it had helped possibly, um you know, you got that rain in there, so you know, we watch our flows, so. I mean, it brought it down a little bit, but we're still, you know, yesterday we were at, you know, three point six. So.
What would be a reasonable timeframe for continuing the two a day and then saying at that point, we would have to transition to one a day? Or or one a week, sorry.
Yeah, I I get it, I don't know if I can give you that answer.
Yeah, is it even possible to to institute a policy around once a week?
Oh, I I I think it's possible, you know, I I don't see, you know, I looked at it today, I mean, we've we've looked at many different scenarios of how things would work. And if you went to once a week, the the tough part is policing that, you know, that that's the hard thing. But we got our city broke up into, you know, um plow zones or voting areas or, you know, y- you could do something like that. To try to, try to split it up and get it, you know, compartmentized if if you wanna call it that, who can water on this day? Somewhat you run into, if it's my day to water, you know, I'm gonna water, so you you know, you could water, you know. Um I make my rounds a couple of times in the morning, I probably get probably three or four violators every morning, you know. Which I don't know if it's bad or good or, you know, you know, I think a lot of people are making some efforts, you know, definitely.
And does the time of day, I mean, does the time of day make a difference? I mean, I know it makes a difference.
Certainly.
Logically, but like as far as the amount of water we have.
Certainly, we've we've tried to kinda stress and put out that eleven A or eleven PM to, you know, three PM is our, or three AM, excuse me. Is our is our prime time that we're, we got the most water supplied, but if everybody waters at that time, you know, you kinda defeat the purpose.
So I guess I'm I'm in agreement, I just feel like we would need some sort of definitive date. At which point we need to transition to something more restrictive.
Yeah, yeah, a- and again, the DNR, the mayor is right, you know, the DNR is, you know, they're not really, you know, they're not really pointing the finger. You know, giving you hard, hard dates, hard times, hard amounts, you know, they want you to implement, start working towards it, yep, okay. But at what point is, you know, you, at what point is? You know, once that, and I don't, I can't tell you and I don't wanna, but once that water gets below that pump, you know, that that's, you know, that's where we're where we're at. So. You know, we we approved the the DNR grant earlier in the consent agenda, so that's a DNR grant, we gotta put in, you know, monitoring wells. We use, we used to use our production wells to monitor our levels, well, they want us, you know, we're gonna be, we accepted that grant, it's a matching grant. We're gonna have to put in monitoring wells, so that's all we're monitoring is that, we have to monitor that for two years before they'll allow us to drill another well.
I'll just chime in here, I mean, John's covered pretty much everything and I'd say the council, I think, is thinking of this in the right context and that. We we likely won't meet the, the DNR is asking us to get down to two million gallons per day and probably sh- short of a watering ban, we probably don't get there. Uh making improvements and reductions is obviously good, we, you know, we might not get all the way to what they're asking for. Uh any kind of improvement is gonna be good in the DNR's eyes, but, you know, the the end result of all this is we're probably gonna be sitting at the table. With the DNR with, you know, future appropriations or monitoring well requests and things like that and. Uh you know, being good partners with them now will help them be good partners with us in the future, is and like I said, I think I'm here in the council's kinda. Looking at this with that that lens, so.
Do we know our?
Sorry.
Do we know all like our our, and they highlight in that in that email, but that our top ten or fifteen users? Right, is there, is there something, not only, I mean, we're putting a significant amount on our residents, which is. Our major user, right, but.
Our our major users, the nursing home.
Okay.
That's our highest user.
Let's turn the water off.
So that is our highest user and then, you know, if we don't have a lot of big users anymore, you know, Zertz uses a a a. A substantial amount of water.
I gotta imagine Tulpen is.
Yeah.
Significant.
Yeah, like I said, I'd have to pull the records and see where they're at.
I'm just wondering if there's things we can do on that front as well, uh on a conservation effort, does, hey, is, are there things that you can do differently in the next thirty days? That you don't have to do now, right, maybe there's maintenance that can be deferred for thirty days, uh and how they use water that will help us get to this. Along with our residential help.
Yeah, I'm sure possibly, we can, we can talk to some of them, the the people.
Council, um before us is asked to approve the watering ban, um. It's been healthy discussion of where do we want to, um what direction can we give staff collectively?
It sounds like we pretty much agree that it's continue on two days a week now and try to push conservation. Until this gets worse.
I don't want it to get worse, I hope there's a solution before it gets worse, but I I think that if we really push that message in. And I'll be one to say that I might have missed the two day watering ban announcement last week myself, but I I was out of town on vacation. But um so I I think as people get aware, uh become aware, um we might see a a better result from that.
Can we put a uh, I guess, more definitive, if we don't reach this level or this time period that we move to one? Um just having, again, I think, uh Tim, you said it, but just giving the public, the residents, a clear picture. That here's where we have to move towards and if we can't collectively, then we are forced to take the next step. Um I think that's health policing, I agree, I I I miss what days odd even were supposed to be watering if that was out there. And so I just thought it was more of, hey, we desire you to do it, two days a week, pick your days, so um. Yeah, those are my thoughts, is layout and how, at what point do we get to a full water ban, um outside of the governor ordering that?
I yeah, I agree with that and kinda like Jill said is give them a measuring point where here, we we give you the power and empower the residents to. Hey, we'll give you the freedom to not do the ban, but you need to follow the steps or we'll go to that point. It's like if we give it open ended, then kinda like we said, when do you come back to it?
Right.
So what do we review at every council meeting, or, you know?
Is two weeks an appropriate time for?
I think we need to assess staff, we can get together tomorrow, engineering, and we can maybe come up with a plan and get it out to council and, you know, kind of get a definitive plan. See if we can get, get it to work, sure.
Yeah, I know the, um, I know one of the individuals would reach out to council the whole, uh, about lawn care and that, but. Uh, others I talked to, they're more than happy to engage their residents in the community on. You know, put your mower at the highest level possible, it's, no one's desiring a green lawn right now, it's just keeping your lawn alive, right, so. Yeah, I think the more we can, uh. Put us a phased approach for the residents, the better. Seeing agreement on that?
Mayor, members of the council, I was just gonna add a little note to that, and Ryan, you kind of hit it on the nail, we are going to need. All efforts in getting the word out, I mean, I think. I think I've heard two of you say that you didn't even know about the two day ban, and that seems to be our biggest struggle is. Not even necessarily the enforcement piece, we can get out and split the city into sections, but it's getting the word out, that there's actually this ban and the. End result, and we can do press releases and put it on our Facebook and put it on our website and.
Red blinking sign that costs so much.
It's, yeah, yes, it, I mean, short of driving down the streets with a, um, loudspeaker, we. Um, are trying every effort on a staff level to get the word out, and inherently there are people that just don't see it, and so. Any efforts, whether it's to lawn companies, I think that's a great idea, um, but anything that you guys can do, help share the post, help get the word out. Let people know if you do see that their sprinklers are on, um, cause that is gonna be the only way that. I I mean, it's pretty drastic what we have to do to get to that two million, so if people don't follow it, we will be right back in the same conversation.
And we'll make an effort, we'll get a, you know, with our planning, I think we'll go out and hang door hangers, we'll go out a few mornings. Weekends are a little tougher for us, but we're, you know, really, we're not gonna have any watering on the weekends, so. So hopefully it can be self policed somewhat, that, you know, we're out on the weekends, but. Uh, we'll get some door hangers, uh, we'll make some rounds early morning and we'll s- we'll see if we can get it, you know, slow down, get people informed.
Add on to Tim's public shaming, I showed up last Wednesday to a softball fundraiser that was supposed to be a car wash. Expecting a car wash, they canceled it due to the water conservation efforts. Um, which I wasn't aware of, so I appreciate that, but, uh. No, I I think, yeah, let's all, let's all collectively work to get the message out and give clear direction to the community and, um, they'll police themselves.
Thank you.
Good, uh, department reports, finance.
Good evening, mayors and members of the council, um, at the bottom of your agenda would be the June finance report. Just a couple of notes, uh, no budgetary concerns so far throughout this point in the year, and I think sales taxes trending very well. Um, also to note, we did receive the first half of the American Rescue Plan funding. In the amount of just over a million dollars, so in total we'll receive just over two million dollars, the second distribution will be. Next year in the summer at some point, uh, further discuss discussion to come in the next council meeting. Any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
The second round isn't coming till next summer?
That's correct, yep.
Any questions for finance? Thank you, administration.
Mayor, members of the council, you have my report in your packet, um, a couple of things I'll just update out of there, we wrapped up. All of the policy updates and committee charters, which was a huge lift for staff to try to get those all. Um, consistent and updated and relevant to current practices. You will see an updated assessment policy coming at a future date, um, it's just being reviewed by legal right now, uh, that's the only outstanding policy left. Um, we are. We will be receiving a reban- rebrand analysis of the survey in the coming days, I'll be sure to share that, hopefully this Friday I can share that out with you guys. Um, and then also further exciting news that we'll be receiving at our August ninth meeting is fiber expansion agreements for both. Second Street from Pine Cone to, um, there's a handheld, a handle right at the beginning of the bridge there. Um, so an expansion of fiber, of our fiber network there, and then also to have the fiber go live. That's currently in Connecticut Avenue out in our Med Tech area, so both of those agreements. Uh, will be coming forth for your review at the next, uh, council meeting.
Council, any questions for administration? Thank you, community development.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, you have my report in your packets for community development, um, just to highlight. Um, from our total valuation for residential billing is up over the last two years, um, part of last year obviously would be. COVID restrictions and some of the challenges that we've navigated through, um, but just from a overall valuation standpoint, that is up. As well as our commercial inspection and total residential inspections for twenty twenty one, have any other questions?
Thank you, council, any questions for community development? Alright, moving on to city commission updates.
Mayor, members of the council, I, one update I would add, um, as Scott mentioned last council meeting, he had met with the planning commission, so. We were able to have a good dialogue with them about them coming for, um, quarterly meetings for updates. We did have a economic development commission meeting this last week, um, and had the opportunity to discuss with members. The combination of the C V B, uh, the Convention Visitors Bureau and the E D C into the Everything Sartell. Committee, um, it was, it was actually really well received, um, and especially from some of the veteran members who've been on for a long time of. Yep, this is the right transition, it's a, it's a good way to give additional authority to this group, they're looking forward to coming. For ci- city commission updates as well, quarterly, um. Prior to that, we'll need to make some ordinance updates and then also reappoint people to the new committee. Right now, we've left it with both committees that we wanna give members an opportunity to, you know, if you wanna bow out at this time. Some of them have been on there for several terms, and it is a a big volunteer commitment. Now's the opportunity, we've had a few of them that have taken that opportunity and then a few that have said that they'd like to stay on, so we're just waiting to. Give them a chance to do that, and then we'll come forward with recommendations for appointments for that committee and then, um, also terms for it. And then the ordinance change, but overall, very well received, I think it's gonna, uh, give new light and direction to. The economic development aspect in Sartell, especially around visitors being that we have now Shields Athletic Complex and a state of the art. Baseball field, uh, that visitor and that that visitor ver- bureau piece of economic development and tying it all together, I think is. Is really gonna be reignited, which will be awesome.
Uh, city council updates.
Mayor, can I put in one thing I forgot about, excuse me, um, splash pad, um, what do we wanna do with the splash pad? Uh, we use about fifty thousand gallons a day.
Council?
I know my confidence, I was surprised, I was on my road by yesterday.
One thing that we're seeing other communities doing, something to consider is just changing the hours, you know. Take an hour or two off either end of it and, you know, a- again, you're not. You still have that amenity, but you're you're having some conservation and reductions in water, so something to consider.
It's tough, right? We're asking people to cut back, but, yeah, you know, I.
So our, you know, just to, our splash pad runs off our system water.
Right.
Um, other splash pads in other communities, they have a tank, it runs just like a swimming pool. So we're we're drawing right off our city, city supply.
Mayor, members of the council, I will say that is, when people are policing this, just going off the last water ban. They will let us know that that splash pad is still on, um, if we're asking them to to go down to two days a week, could we? Maybe do a couple days a week or something, I don't know.
I'm just, yeah, I.
Could we have it on just the weekends, uh, I I. Again, I agree that we need to look at ourselves first and say, hey, how are we conserving water before we're forcing it on to others and if. If we can't demonstrate that, um.
We have actually shut down all our city systems, all our city watering has been, has been shut down.
I I would agree, I'd say, I know it's a brand new amenity, but I think people will understand that this is pretty serious right now.
And so, again, based on what whatever staff discusses, if there is no residential watering on the weekends. Could we utilize the splash pad on the weekends, which would keep our, you know, average of somewhat in line, I guess?
But Sunday's the the biggest day for water usage, right?
Yeah, you know, you think about a Sunday, and that's year round, I mean, even the winter, people are coming home, laundry, you know, kids get shower ready, you know, for the school week, and so. Sunday is always your high day.
What's the thought on turning it off completely or having it on a couple days?
I would think having it on on the weekends until we go to this next phase, maybe?
I I I think that's legitimate, you know, I think we can give it a try. Alright, thank you.
Thanks. Council updates, Tim.
I always start on my side.
Yeah, every single time.
That's weird. Um, well, uh, one, I got a few here on my list of things to talk about. Uh, one note to whoever plans these meetings, not to put all the controversial stuff in one giant basket and throw it on our plate. Um, but I understand, timing is everything, um, so. Going back to a couple of the issues, um, Jeff, you brought up a great point on the, on the, the. County Road fifteen and, or Highway fifteen and County Road one, the car wash issue, I I really think that's something we can. And study and make sure that, um, the sound and the disturbance of that usage is not, uh, within the vicinity of. Of the homes and and make sure that, um, it's a needed amenity there, um. I agree that 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 is annoying and time, you know. Hours of operation, whatever, so, let's, uh, I'd like to focus in on that a little bit, um. I also think that, uh, I'm super excited about the the direction that the county road, um, and pedestrian path and the bridge. All that stuff is gonna be such a great amenity going forward, I I think, you know, ten years down the road, people are gonna, are gonna know. Sartell for that pathway and that that bridge and all that stuff, it's gonna be a huge amenity for the the region, I even suspect. Um, also, I I think that on the nineteenth street, um, assessments, I I feel terrible. Um, that's one of those really difficult decisions on those homes out there, um, family farms and and. And just, there's no perceived, there's a value to it, but they they can't realize that value of their property without. Selling it and 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 I think that thirty year window needs to be, um, evaluated and and somehow figure out a way to. Lessen that burden, because like I said, there there's people on, living on social security and we're hitting them with a. Two hundred thousand dollar assessment, I couldn't afford that and I work full time, it's ridiculous, so. I I know that the value is based on the pr- the square, you know, the size of the property, but I I think that as a city, we should. Really take a look at that, um, I know that's some of the hardest stuff that we have to deal with as a, as a city, um. But I also think that you look at the people that are benefiting from this, it's the people in celebration, it's the people in the wilds that I, my neighborhood. That use that road every single day, um, barring a usage fee, um, we can't bear that cost other than just. In general with the budget of the city, but, um, the other thing, um, the the trout property and I I. I appreciate the information and 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 it's under consideration and advisement, I I wanna continue that dialogue, so. I hope to find a solution for that soon, so, thank you.
Um, tonight we heard from Dr. Anjum regarding the school board's equity audit, um, and. And the perceived lack of response from the city, I'm just wondering if we can bring that to a workshop at some point to discuss. You know, what our involvement should or what we want that to look like, um, and have further discussion about it.
Yeah, absolutely, we have an August ninth workshop, and I think the only thing on that agenda right now is the ARPA funding, so we could, uh, discuss that then.
Great, thanks.
Um, just a couple things real quick, uh, you know, in what, uh, Tim was saying there too about that County Road nineteen. You know, anytime you develop property or roads get replaced, whatever, it's never fun, uh, I've been doing this for. Many years now in two different cities, and it's the same, it's very passionate, a lot of emotions, um. I agree that, you know, we may maybe need to relook at some of this assessment, uh, see, there's, there's gotta be a better way to do it. Um, a- and we do need to keep in mind when we're doing this that there are people that w- that have fixed incomes here in this community, it's not, we're not all employed. You know, right now, so, um, the other thing too is, uh, I just wanna thank the Sartell Police Department, I, um. Had the opportunity to go to Fire Fest this year for the first time, and I was walking around and I caught, saw a couple of our officers out there, they look good. And please thank them, uh, they did a great job out there, everybody had fun and.
Were they working or partying?
They're, they were working, they're in uniform, so, but no, they, it was great to see not only the fact that our city was represented. They were helping another community, um, but they were also helping out the fire department, which is, it's a great fundraiser for the fire department, so, definitely thank them.
Yeah, I agree with everything that's been said, the one thing I do want to add again is the County Road one, and like you said, the several emails we got. Um, and my responses to some of those residents was that this council is. Very hung on the safety of the additions to make, the roads we make, and trying to do that on the front end, uh, but we don't have issue with issues that come up such as. Cut throughs on hunting and stuff like that, um, and I think we need to take advantage of this and change the dynamic of County Road one to be known as. The highway where the crews in the town to actually slope you down and know it as a road where people cross over and know it's, you're stopping often on that road. Um, and like we've all admitted up here, it's, we're just as much to blame as anyone else of coming in too fast on that road, but I think it's our chance to. Once we make these changes, to continually evaluate that to make sure there isn't other changes that need to be made, um, after the project's done.
Well, I echo everything the, uh, previous four have mentioned, um. I think to the testimony tonight on the three items, uh, that we had heard testimony on, I think it reminds us. That every decision we make, that there's a person behind it that's impacted or multiple people behind it that's impacted, um, a- and that. We're not up here on a whim making decisions that we hear people loud and clear, we understand, we oftentimes try and put ourselves. In their situation, um, as council member Cole articulated on a couple of the items. And then second on the equity, uh, audit that we heard tonight as well, um, I did have an opportunity to. Um, sit down and had lunch with Dr. Riddle Hoover, uh, last week, um. Was an opportunity just to introduce and, uh, and meet, um, for the last year, I know staff and myself have had. Um, conversations, um, not out in the public or or picking. Uh, as we were asked tonight, that if we don't join this side, that we, um, you know, we might not be supportive. Um, I I think we need to be a partner to the school board and to the school staff in supporting. The direction and working together for the best outcome of our community. Uh, and not determining which Facebook group we are going to side with or, uh, become part of, so. Uh, look forward to having that that workshop session on that and, um, supporting the school board in the direction that they will ultimately go. Uh, last thing, uh. Jeff reminded me as he was talking about our police, um, St. Cloud shines. Um, which is part of the G S D C, is doing a regional marketing effort to really market our our. Communities, not just St. Cloud, uh, had an opportunity, last minute opportunity on Friday, uh, they asked that we. Park a fire truck and a police car in front of the station and just simply waved to the camera as they went by. There were some technical difficulties, so we were there for about forty five minutes, uh, as, at four thirty when there was heavy traffic flow, so there's a lot of, um. Residents probably wondering what in the world we're doing, I hope that comes out in a video at some point, and, um, it'll be great, they're they're capturing. Different elements of St. Cloud, Saw Rapids, uh, Wade Park and St. Joe and Sartell obviously included, so, uh, be fun. Uh, and and Sergeant Gray, uh. So, so, uh, it was fun, uh, the group that's doing it is also working with us on our rebrand, uh, refresh effort, so. It'll be fun to see when it comes out, that's all I have tonight, uh, great meeting, and I'd look for a motion to adjourn. With a motion, do we have a second? All in favor? Aye, opposed, we're adjourned.